As we call on Bill Sonmore, our Finance Director for this evening's invocation.
Join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight with thanks and praise to you again tonight for this beautiful city of Fergus Falls, and I thank you for each person that is willing to serve and takes interest in the local government here. Father, we have a number of issues before us tonight, and Lord, you know what is best for this city, and I pray that your will would be done. We pray for your guidance and your direction now. We pray this all in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Here.
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 I got ahead of myself. I'll call the meeting to order. Thank you for the roll call. The first item of business is under Public Hearings, conduit debt hearing for Lake Region Healthcare conduit debt, and I'll call on Bill Sonmore.
Tonight, we're having a, gonna have a hearing open for the Lake Region Healthcare project. You can see that construction has begun. Lake Region Healthcare has requested the City Council that they issue bonds through us as a conduit. The City of Fergus Falls is not liable in any way for that debt. Lake Region Healthcare is the organization that is guaranteeing that debt and making those payments. You have a resolution before you approving of that sale of bonds. It's for $8 million. Now, that's not for the whole amount of the project. Cities in Minnesota can issue up to $10 million per year of what's called bank-qualified debt, and that means banks can get in on the deal of purchasing those bonds. And the interest rate is actually better that way if it's bank-qualified debt, so that's why you typically will see us coming forward with things under $10 million. We issued some other conduit debt previous in this year for productive alternatives, I believe it was, so we have about, you know, a little over $8 million left that's available. So Lake Region is gonna use that this year, and then probably right away, early in 2015, we'll look at what our structure looks like, and they may come back and look for some more on that as well. So round number, $8 million. The resolution here references a few different documents, one being a loan agreement, a pledge agreement, and then the actual note. Now, if you read the note, it looks like, okay, City of Fergus Falls has this note with Bremmer Bank. And then you have a loan agreement where we're loaning that then to Lake Region Healthcare. And then the pledge agreement pledges that Lake Region then is the responsible party. And it's clear in our resolution that the taxing powers and our authority is not at all put up for these bonds, so we're purely acting as a conduit, as we've done many times in the past.
We need to open...
Need to open the hearing and allow any...
And let anyone speak to it. We open the hearing. The conduit debt, with anyone who wishes to discuss it or comment, please come forward and identify ourselves. There being none, we'll close... Oh, all right.
All right. Thanks for entertaining my five minutes here. My name is Jake Crone. I live at 307 East Vernon Avenue. Mr. Mayor, Council, while I have been critical of the design of this project in the past, tonight, I'm offering no resistance to this loan. Though I am untrained in legalese and I lack the financial acumen necessary to fully digest this weighty agreement, it seems to help advance the cause of the hospital and the city with little risk to the taxpayer. However, I would like to draw your attention to page four of the resolution, which is page seven of the agenda pack, for those of you following at home, specifically part F of the findings, which is under section 1.1. I'm just gonna read that very quickly. It reads in part, "On the basis of information available to the city, it appears, and the city hereby finds, that the effect of the project, if undertaken, will be to: assist in the prevention of the emergence of blighted and marginal land; to help prevent chronic unemployment; to help the surrounding area retain and eventually improve the tax base; to provide the range of service and employment opportunities required by the population; to help prevent the movement of talented and educated persons out of the state into areas within the state where their services may not be as effectively used; to promote more intensive development and use of land within the city and surrounding communities; and to provide available adequate community and healthcare services to residents of the state at a reasonable cost." Noble goals, all of them. But I'd like to call the attention to a few of these findings, and perhaps for further discussion or clarification of the issues behind them. First one I want to talk about is the finding that it is, this project enables the prevention of blighted and marginal land. Personally, I find this ironic if this loan is granted with this in mind, as prior to Lake Region's acquisition and later demolition or neglect of a number of houses in the neighborhood, blighted and marginal land did not exist here, at least not as it has existed for the past several years. Giving praise for this is sort of like patting the back of the scoundrel who starts your house on fire and then comes by with a hose to put it out. Second point is the finding that it will retain and improve the tax base. To me, anyway, and from what I've done for research, it is still unclear what the net tax effect of this new construction will be. Currently, the parcel that the clinic sits on brings in about $76,000 a year to the city and the county. Everything else on that block, south up to the cancer center, is tax exempt. The demolished structures, which now number three houses and two commercial buildings, paid in 2014 about $21,000 in additional taxes. All said, that's about $97,000 in total taxes paid. Now, will the new facility meet or exceed that figure? It's likely, as the cancer center pays nearly $200,000 a year in taxes. But do we know this for sure? If we don't, why not? Furthermore, does anybody care enough to raise that question? And then finally, the finding that this will promote a more intensive development and use of land within the city. This, I feel, is at best a wash and at worst a misrepresentation of the facts. As was previously mentioned, the construction of this new facility was made possible through the recent demolition of five buildings, six if you count the later demolition of the existing clinic, and as well as the earlier removal of several other houses along Vernon and Mill, where the old parking lots once stood. Altogether, these demolitions represent over 32,000 square feet of built-upon land. The new facility is estimated to contain about 76,000 square feet over three floors, or about a 25,000-square-foot footprint. That's 8,000 square feet less than what existed prior to development. The expansion of the north side parking lot to run all the way along Vernon Avenue from beyond Mill to Cascade, and the creation of another parking lot to the south of the facility is not, in my opinion, befitting of a project that promotes a more intensive development and use of the land. While it's easy to see that this train has already left the station, and that to stand in the way of it would be foolish and counterproductive at this point, I do hope that my comments give you pause just long enough to consider the effect that this type of construction, of this type of construction in a neighborhood such as this one. While the continued success of Lake Region Hospital is one of the foundations underlying our city's longevity, one must also remain wary of institutional exceptionalism and our own tendencies to always assume that what's good for the goose is good for the gander. At the very least, I would like to see that along with this conduit loan agreement comes a recognition of and a commitment to ensuring that the entirety of the final built product is a structure and grounds that are worthy of our fair city and the neighborhood in which it is placed. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Any other comments that need to come forward? If not, we'll close the hearing and call for a resolution approving the conduit debt proposal.
I'll lay that.
Anthony, thank you. Second?
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Randy? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Under bids, awarding of bids, we will need a resolution to accept, quote, "an award contract to Delzer Construction or CapEx 2020 utility relocation," and I'll call on Dan Edwigs.
In the memo, you'll note that we received three quotes on this project, ranging from a low of just under $46,000 to a high of over $147,000. The engineer's estimate was $50,205, so the local contractor's quote does meet the budget that was established with XL Energy with their reimbursement letter that they had provided the city. As noted at the Finance Committee meeting, there's a tight window for getting this work done. There was a pre-construction meeting this morning, and they started work on it today, which is the reason we brought it up at the Finance Committee so everybody was aware of this was happening. Just like to recommend again that the contract be awarded to Mark and Brenda Construction doing business as Delzer Construction.
Any questions? Would someone offer a resolution?
I'll offer, Your Honor.
Scott? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Stan? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. There are no petitions or communications this evening. There is no open forum. The next item will be the consent agenda. The following are non-controversial items intended to be approved with one motion without discussion. If a council member, staff, or member of the public would like to discuss an item, please ask that it be removed and it will be placed elsewhere on the agenda. Item one, a resolution to approve conversion of community room at the community arena to a shooting room. Item two, resolution to approve the 2015 user fees for the community arena. Item three, a resolution to approve city acting as fiscal host and sponsoring agent for Monarch Festival. Item four, resolution to certify election judges for the November 4, 2014 general election. Item five, motion to appoint Matt Holkstra to the Heritage Preservation Commission. Item six, a motion to approve the open and closed minutes from the September 15, 2014 city council meeting. Item seven, a motion to approve the licenses, and you have that in your packet. I will entertain a resolution to approve.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Tim, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second, Your Honor.
Jim? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, there are no first readings this evening, but under second readings, first, Ordinance 16, 7th Series, Amending Chapter 11, Alcoholic Beverages. And we have had a first reading and explanation. Is there any other questions? If not, we will entertain a roll call.
Yes.
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 Item two, a resolution to publish a summary of Ordinance 16, 7th Series, Alcoholic Beverages. Call for a resolution.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Jim Fish, thank you.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Randy? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Item three, a resolution to approve the 2015 fee schedule, and I'll call on Bill Sonmore.
Within your packet, I couldn't find my paper copy, so I'll see how handy I am at scrolling here. We brought up this fee schedule, was it, it was at a committee meeting, right? A couple times ago, I believe. So we gave a little time in between. We'll just briefly run down, again, it's those items that are highlighted, and I'll probably look to our Public Works Director, Guy Taylor, to chime in as well. But on your first page, you have the nuisance, $100 fee, and then with each additional notice, a $100 fee. This looks like we added, right, Guy? Mechanical licensing, Class A and Class B, going to 125 and 40 there, and various miscellaneous licenses, excavator license going from 40 to 100, demo, hauler, and building waste from 50 to 100, junk dealer from 150 to 200, metal recycling from 50 to 100, paving contractors' and sign hanger license, both from 40 to 100. On the next, we have rentals. We have parking stall going from $15 to $18 per month, plus sales tax. You can see we have Lot 1 parking stall rental there. Give some narrative. Yeah, the covered structure, that's the parking deck over here at $30 per stall, so that's a little more because it is a covered structure. 35-gallon refuse container, 95-gallon bike racks, you can see the fees there of five and five up to the disposal fees as well for what's in those containers. Bike racks, 250 for delivery and installation and taking apart. Leachate disposal, that would be at our sewer plant, $36 per 1,000 gallons. Under permit fees, building moving permit going from $10 to 35. On temporary sign permit, notice the addition of the verbiage there, per owner. You, as a council, took that action some time ago now. We're just implementing that into the fee schedule. Temporary sign permit, if it's after the fact, it would be $100 per owner, so we want people to get in here ahead of time and not having to do that stuff after the fact. Water, abandoned water services there at $2,000. That's a fee we have been charging, so if you have a water service that's, you know, getting cut off or whatnot and abandoned, but we don't want to dig up the street at that time, you implement that fee so we're covered at a later time, so we're not unnecessarily digging the street. Fire protection system permit, 50, subject tank permit, 50, building demolition permit, Let's see, the next section is building and zoning fees. This is implementing a whole new schedule for those building permits. The last schedule was from the mid-'90s, is that right? Or was it even earlier, '91 or something? This will bring us up to what the state has as their building codes, fees? Which were, it's still a number of years back, right? But it's what's in the building code right now that we would just be matching our fee schedule with that. Plumbing inspection, 750 per fixture. Landfill, you can see the compost brush. You've already implemented that at $8 per yard. We're getting that on the schedule. That's for a non-resident fee. It still is no charge to residents to bring your brush out there, but for non-residents, $8 per yard. Conditional use permits, and after-the-fact conditional use permit again, at 750, so we're, you know, having that higher because it's after the fact. Rental housing registration, and I know, you know, that's kind of what had us tabled this going to today. You can see the fees here, one to nine units was at $10, going to $20 per unit per year. 10 or more units going from $20 per year to $15 per unit per year. And then it says late registration fee after January 1st of each year, triple the regular registration fee units that are currently eligible for HUD section or IRS 4D occupancy based on a current certificate, 750 per unit per year. You guys are probably ahead of me. I'm getting down here. Impound vehicle, $20 per day inside fee added there. And that's, that's it. So open that for your questions. Again, Guy may have to answer more of them, and what are your, what are your feelings going forward, and what would you like to, to see us implement?
Any questions or comments?
Yes, Your Honor. You know, I'm okay with the changes outlined, with the exception of the rental housing registration. And my understanding in talking with Guy Taylor after the last meeting is that the, the purpose for the significant raise in that level was to begin a rental inspection program and to, to cover basically 100% rental inspection to, and to fund the necessary pieces to have that program implemented. And I think it would be important to, to make sure we as a council are on board with beginning, I view that as a policy change, and I think we should thoroughly vet the consequences and whether that's something we would want to do. So, I mean, I would offer a motion to approve the fees with the exception of the rental housing registration, and we table that one for further discussion.
Is there a second?
I can second that.
Stan? Any comments?
Would it be possible for Guy to address, bring everybody up to speed on what the
We have some over 2,000 rental units in the city, and there's just been a lot of units that we in the Building Department have been called to, to inspect for deficiencies. And what we see, we see are pretty typical issues, so we just felt that it would be a time to implement an inspection program where every four years, each unit was looked at pretty thoroughly, and any deficiencies then would need to be corrected by the homeowner. Just trying to get in line with communities in the area to, the larger communities, Detroit Lakes, Alexandria, they all have a similar type of program.
When would we look to discuss that further and implement it?
Well, we can, as Randy suggested, just table it and maybe set up a work session and dig into it. Maybe after the first of the year.
In the meantime, it remains at $10? Is that...
Question, Your Honor.
Okay.
Your Honor, so if we waited till the first of the year, then it would be a whole nother year before you start this program?
Correct.
And when would, if we, if we talk about it tonight or a month from now, when would be, you plan to implement that program next year?
We would hope to, yes.
Can we talk about it before the first of the year?
Sure.
When do, when do they, when do most people renew their registrations?
Well, the registrations are due by November 15th, so the letters will have to go out this week, you know, pending the outcome here tonight.
So this would really give us another year or two. I mean, because we wouldn't charge the fees until next fall of '15, right?
Right.
So you'd have time then. We wouldn't have to rush and do it by the end of the year, because we wouldn't implement it until a year from now.
Scott?
And we can also, I mean, you and I have looked at that layout in Morehead.
Right.
And so it takes some time for us to get that in order. I mean, I think it's just something, it's, we need to do it. I agree with you 100%, but it isn't all the time until we're ready for it, I guess is what I'm saying. I think we should wait.
So how would it function? I mean, obviously, if there's 2,000 units, you can't physically do 2,000 units. I mean, I'm assuming you're gonna do like 500 a year?
Right.
And cycle them?
Get them every four years.
Right. And then there would be a fee for that, to the owner of the facility?
This increased registration fee would cover that.
But we're not, we're looking, we're not looking to put that up though.
So, yeah, then the inspection program wouldn't start until we have a fee schedule implemented to cover those costs.
So...
It's gonna take a lot of time.
Could you explain what a typical inspection would be? What it would cover?
Yeah, it would cover, I had given a sample of an inspection sheet from the City of Morehead, and it, it just goes through the basic life safety issues that are required in every rental unit, and it's a form that's formatted basically off of the HUD inspection program. So it's smoke detectors, railings, yeah, CO detectors, yeah.
So there'd be no, there'd be no direct cost to the owner of the facility at that, at the time of the inspection?
No. Just upon registration, they would pay the potential increase in the registration fee.
And what do you think an inspection is physically gonna cost?
Well, depending on the unit, could be half hour, hour per unit. But some units won't take that long at all, so...
So is there a reason why we won't want to put it up now then? To build some funds?
I'll just...
Because it's gonna cost the city, isn't it, to do this?
Well, the concern I have, and again, I wanted to, you know, argue the merits of or lack thereof, you know, I think we, we can all acknowledge that there are some, some problem properties that consistently come up, but what we're doing with this proposal is we're essentially having the, the non-problem landowners, rental owners, pay for the 100% inspection that would not necessarily be needed because of just the few. And so that's, that's the bigger issue that I'm concerned about, and, and the concern of government overreach and, and some of those discussions that, that could take place.
Your Honor, I don't, I don't disagree that we, you know, should have further discussion on this at some point, but I think that some of those properties, I'm gonna guess, we don't know about them right now unless we do an inspection, you know, we're not, you know, obviously, there's some that are easy to tell. But wait in the year, I mean, is that, what are your feelings about waiting a year?
Well, yeah, that's not my preference. I would like to see something happen sooner than that, but, I mean, if we can get something established and get it going for 2016, I guess, it's, that would be better than nothing.
Your Honor...
Yes, Ben.
I mean, it seems like there's, these programs are in place in Morehead and Alexandria and Detroit Lakes. Is it possible we could have a discussion before, I mean, the applications or registrations are due November 15th, is that correct?
Correct.
Do people have already, people already registered and paid them now? Is it something they do in advance or they pay them on the 15th?
No, the notices to register them for 2015 have not gone out yet, so...
I'd like, personally, I'd like to see it discussed this year, and if we're gonna do it, I'd like to see it done as soon as possible.
My question is, do we have, is there an alternative offer? I get the argument, but if we're gonna inspect, I mean, would it be your preference, then, that we don't do inspections unless something arises that we need to go out there, and at that time, we charge whoever the problem person might be for doing the inspection?
Here's an alternative that I'll, I'll put out as a suggestion, you know, in recognizing that the, that there are some problematic rental properties. And the alternative would be that when you get called about a concern, a rental inspection, that we, we do the inspection and we bill the person that's calling, that's requesting that service. And perhaps a, and I know there's an area where we're, where we do offer rental and, not just rental, but inspection fees, and establish a, you know, per-hour rate with a minimum of X, so that when someone comes in and requests or calls in and requests an inspection, that the person requesting that inspection pay that fee.
Are you talking about the renter or the landlord?
The person...
The renter.
The person requesting the fee.
If the renter requests that their property be inspected, the only problem with that is, is then you're gonna have people that if they live in a crappy place and they need an inspection, they're paying to have to prove they have a crappy place. So I get it, right? We have to balance some interests here, but there's a way to do it that it's fair, right? You don't want to, you don't want to dissuade people from being... You don't want to, you don't want to dissuade people from being able to complain about their property being in poor repair. But I understand your point that you don't want to make everybody just pay for it because most of the landlords in this town are good people and take care of their stuff. So, we got to find a compromise.
Ken?
These are all valid points and this is a good discussion, but I think this is not the time and place necessarily. And I would like to request that we have this discussion at a work session prior to the next council meeting to allow time for notices to go out in time this year if necessary.
We do have a motion before us. And a second.
Yeah, we need to do a resolution to pass a fee schedule.
So. But it is with-
That was the resolution.
With the exception.
Right.
And so, we need to act on that. Ready for the question? Roll call, please.
Sinstall.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Sinstall.
Yes.
Shire.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Psycho.
Yes.
Renquist.
Resolution is approved. We will then have another motion.
Yes, I will move that we have this discussion at a work session prior to the next scheduled council meeting.
Second?
That's Your Honor.
Jim? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried, thank you. Pardon me?
What date?
20th, is it?
Just at the 4th, is that 20th?
Before the 20th.
20.
You want to have it prior to the meeting?
Let's look at the calendar and see if there's anything. We'll send some dates out tomorrow, some possible dates.
All right. Under presentation of claims. This evening, it's $2,601,357.06. If you have any questions, refer them to Bill Sonmore. I will entertain a mo, a resolution to approve.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Jim?
I'll second.
Scott, second. Roll call, please.
Sinstall.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Sinstall.
Yes.
Shire.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Psycho.
Yes.
Renquist.
The resolution is approved. Under Board Committee and Departmental Reports, we're calling for a resolution to approve Planning Commission recommendation to grant a conditional use permit to allow the third dwelling unit in an R2 zone located at 925 West Linden as requested by Jerome Tisdale. And I'll, April, or, April, would you address that, please?
On September 22nd, there is a Planning Commission meeting to allow a conditional use permit for a third unit at 925 West Linden with the fair conditions. Approved by that committee of six off-street parking spaces for renters, including a garage. No illumination, premise that shines directly on the neighboring properties. No pets on the property, no home occupant operate, no occupants operating by, or no home use, no conditional uses by CUP in the structure. No storage or parking of business vehicles or equipment on the property or street by tenants or owners. With the exception that if a tenant is working for a contracting company with a vehicle with a logo on, that is acceptable to be parked in the driveway. And the land, or, Tisdale's are to file appropriate screening relating to the rentals, rental applications and registration. The Tisdale's have also had their attorney draft a resolution that, that coincides and that should be in your packet as well. And they meet those fair conditions that were stated at the Planning Commission meeting held on September 22nd.
Our city attorney, do we have, you have any comment regarding the petition, the resolution and so on?
No, I have no comments. I've reviewed the proposed resolution drafted by the Tisdale's attorney and has been reviewed by staff as well. And it is acceptable based upon the Planning Commission's recommendations. It meets those.
Any questions, comments from the council? Ben?
Just reading through the minutes. Did the, the conditions that were put forth, did they, did the neighbors in, in person at the, at the hearing, did that seem to ease their concerns about?
The majority.
Those that were in opposition?
Yes. I don't know, I'm sure we're going to open up for discussion for those that do have concerns. But at any time, it is understood that if these fair conditions aren't met or kept, that the conditional use permit can be revoked or reviewed at that time.
Would somebody offer?
I'll offer, Your Honor.
Jim? Who seconded?
Jim.
Scott offered.
Scott, okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Sinstall.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Sinstall.
Yes.
Shire.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Psycho.
Yes.
Renquist.
Yes.
Resolution is approved. Item two, a resolution to approve Planning Commission recommendation to grant a additional use permit for chiropractic nutrition and acupuncture practice in an R2 zone located at 627th Avenue as requested by Belinda Cumrell. Again, April, we call on you.
At 627th Avenue, just a chiropractic practice is, is being proposed to open in this home with the understanding that it's not to consume more than one-third of the home's square footage. She is to provide five off-street parking spaces, two in the garage, three in the driveway for owner and clients at all time. No on-street parking for owner or client at all times. Visitors can park in the street. No parking of vehicles or recreational equipment in the front yard except in driveway. Hours of operation to be from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM Tuesdays and Thursdays. Other daytime appointments would be Monday through Saturday. Emergencies allow with written log, which would include patient ID and date and time of service. And this was to accommodate those Saturdays or Sundays when somebody was running, or had an emergency situation that Dr. Cumrell, or Cumrell had to address. Non-emergency services will never be more than 35 visits per week. And those were the fair conditions that were approved by the, or Planning Commission.
Randy?
Just a question on the hours of operation. Did you state 8:00 or 8:30?
8:30, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, any concerns on the part of our attorney?
No, I have no concerns, Your Honor.
Someone offer a resolution? Anthony?
I'll second.
Randy, thank you. Roll call, please.
Sinstall.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Sinstall.
Yes.
Shire.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Psycho.
Yes.
Resolution is approved. Under reports from staff and administrative officers, we will have an update on snow removal from street sidewalks and paths by Public Works Director Len Taylor.
Director, to the map of the screen there. It was requested that the city clear the snow off of the bike path that runs from Western Avenue, or from Tower Road to Western Avenue. And in looking at that, it's about a half-mile stretch. And it would fall right in with the route that we do maintain along the Tower Road Bridge and then going on up to Lincoln Avenue. We do have some concerns with the construction of that bike path. It was built with a two-and-a-half-inch bituminous mat. So, it wouldn't be structurally sound to do it when the, the ground is soft. So, in the spring, when the frost is coming out, if we get a heavy snow, we wouldn't be able to clear the snow off it at that point. But when the, the ground is firm, frozen, we can do that halfway if it is the desire of the council. I don't know how many concerns we've had with that, the use of that. Anthony?
I received quite a few phone calls. You know, there are quite a few residents that clear the footpath that's adjacent to the side of their house. And, you know, the, I think the main piece was that kind of on the hill, you know, going from kind of the last residence down to Tower Road. So, there's quite a few phone calls. So, I think that if we can do that, that would be, that would make a lot of people happy.
Okay, yeah, if that's the direction you want to give us, we definitely can do it. The equipment that we have can traverse that path. It's, it's a windy one, but if we can get going at the beginning of the season, we can do that. Knowing that with its path, there might be some grass that gets skinned up, but it'll grow back.
Yeah, it always does.
Anthony, you talked about the people that, I drove down there and there's a lot of residents that live along there. Is that, they clean it off already?
Some, some do and obviously some don't necessarily, but.
So, the first, you were talking about the first couple of blocks, is that what you're?
It was mainly the, the, there's that hill, the slope from, you know, coming, as, as with the residents coming into town.
That's straight, that, that, but it gets down, as it gets down, it really gets, I don't know, it'd be very fun to plow with a, what do you, what would you plow with?
With a mower.
We've got the skid steer with the mower or we've got a pickup with a plow, anyone?
We have a sweeper still.
Sweeper, yeah.
And then, just little point of discussion, maybe the, the new path going up Cleveland Avenue onto County Route 27, that's concrete from Fur Avenue all the way up to Scogmo. So, if we are to, in the future, clear the snow off of that path, I mean, that's a discussion point for further. But this winter, we likely would not do that because of the new concrete. If we clear the snow, we would have to put chloride on it. And chloride would ruin the surface of that new concrete. So, we propose to not do that this year.
Any questions, concerns? Thank you.
Yes, the question is, how many people would make use of that? And how beneficial is it to overall community?
That remains to be seen, I'm sure. Snowmobilers use it all the time. But no one can now until-
They would need it cleared, right?
Not, not until some poles are cleared out of the path. And we don't know when that'll be. Ben?
Randy had, go ahead, Randy.
The other question I would have as far as precedent setting and, and, you know, how many miles of path do we have in the city? And is there an expectation that they will be cleaned? And ultimately, what ends up being the, the cost to, to do that is the question I would be interested in hearing.
Yeah, and we can look at sidewalks versus paths. I mean, if it's a policy just to do paths, we can do that. And typically, a, a path is wider and a, a different surface, usually they're bituminous.
Ben?
I would be in favor of, if you proves are out there and it's a path, and it's a city path that people are using, I'm supportive. I don't know if you need a, do you need a resolution to, to do that or a motion or?
I would say we do it this year and see how it goes.
Okay.
We can always adjust it next year.
Okay, and just to deviate from the agenda just a little bit, just a couple of quick updates. The Lake Alice level is being lowered right now so that when we do have ice form, we'll get out there and clean out all that vegetation that has grown up in the lake. And then, we have been looking at plans and designs for the Pebble Beach Bath House. So, hopefully, we get some plans finalized and can get a project started and completed before swimming season in 2015.
What's, what's the?
Anthony?
We did have a request regarding a streetlight. I don't know if you had a chance to look at that, you know, the, a request for the streetlight in Harmony Place in the Cul-de-sac. Dan's answer that?
Yeah, typically, the staff has a policy, we'll go out and look at that. And we've already met with Otter Tail Power. And they'll put a temporary stake out there so the residents can see where we're proposing to put the streetlight. And then, we usually handle that just as a staff, as opposed to going back to the council to request or approve each streetlight. But we are looking at that one as a matter of location.
Thank you.
And then, Ben?
Along those lines, reminded me, now that Mill Street's closed, how long will it take before we, we were going to look at stop signs and yield signs on Court Street and then also that three-way stop? Is that, is that going to be a year from now, is that going to be?
Well, actually, the, the intersection survey at Union and Vernon should be done. I haven't seen the report come back on that yet. And we are still looking to see as traffic patterns change, whether or not there'd be some additional traffic control signs like at Court and Bancroft in that neighborhood.
Court Street?
So, yeah, we're sort of waiting for some traffic patterns to get established.
Sure, thanks.
Anthony?
Coming back to streetlights, is it, is it, are the streetlights on or sort of a PM or anything? And I, as you drive around town, there's a, there's a few streetlights that are not working. And obviously, now it's getting darker. There's certainly one on Alcott that doesn't, doesn't work. Is, you know, do they get periodically looked at and obviously the?
Basically, we just, if somebody notices them, they call us, we'll call Otter Tail Power because the contract we have with Otter Tail Power takes care of full maintenance and of the lights. It's just a, a matter of contacting and the public works. We'll get referred on and get taken care of.
So, basically, if residents see a light out, they can call, call one of you two, that'll get taken care of.
Call down to public works and they'll get it taken care of.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. On to old business. Item one, motion to appoint four city council members to serve as liaison with a EIC board for hiring a new EIC director. We would seek volunteers. Are there any volunteers?
Your Honor, I'll volunteer.
Scott?
I would volunteer.
Anthony?
I'll volunteer.
Randy? Jay? That's it? You can't have more than four. All right, thank you. And when will, will this group be called? Mark?
The EIC has rescheduled their work meeting, their meeting this Wednesday. And that item is on the agenda. And I assume we'll be working out that issue and then we'll getting back to everybody.
Very good, thank you. Okay, thank you. Pardon me?
A motion on that appointment.
All right.
I'd offer a motion, Your Honor, to appoint.
Ben?
I'll second, Ben.
Anthony.
Ben? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried, thank you.
Under old business, before we go to number two, is it, is it possible, Dan, just to get an update on Tower Bridge? It seems like it's the bane of my life and probably yours. Now, we have a ripple effect. Obviously, you know, they ground out some asphalt. It's slowing the traffic down, that's one thing. But obviously, people are most concerned about when it's going to get put back.
Yeah, what we were talking about, Leonard brought that up this, this morning, is that they were, the subcontractors did the concrete work. They had some concrete curb replacement or something that they wanted to do before they came back in to finish putting the bituminous back in. And they were going to be here for the last three days. I don't know if they made it here this morning or not. But it will get relayed with the bituminous back in there. That was a warranty work, that was where they had settlements on the project. So, this is being done by the contractor and the subcontractors.
And are they going to replace the dead trees next year?
The, the trees are all under warranty. They've replaced a number of them already. I know there's a, a number that are yet to come out this fall, just by looking at it. And the, the trees are still under a warranty, so we might be replacing some next spring even.
And I've got one more thing.
Oh, I'll leave it till we get down to the bottom. Number two is community room at the Community Arena. And are you dealing with that, Ben?
You should have received this memo as well from myself and from Steve Plaza. He brought up a, a good point that as we are getting that, the original community room that's being, I guess, remodeled by the Hockey Association into that training room, to then go forward and finish up the other room that's down the hall and on the north side. Probably, you know, in the memo, it said it should not go over $8,000. Originally, we were thinking it would wind up costing us about $20,000 to complete that room. So, that's good news. I would be skim coating those walls, painting carpet. We have a table and chairs, right, that have been donated by M State, is that correct?
Chairs have been donated, an old conference table we had.
Okay, and so, a conference table we had. So, we're going to start out using that. But to get the carpet down and those walls finished, so. so that's why we put that into you tonight, to do that in conjunction as the other room is completed.
So we're looking at a resolution?
A resolution, because, and the funding source would be using the sales tax dollars, you know, like we finish the dehumidification in the restrooms and get this project done now, too, so.
Somebody offer that?
I would offer that resolution.
Randy?
I'll second.
Jim? Roll call, please.
Sinstun.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Sinstun.
Yes.
Shire.
Yes.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. Anthony?
I had a call in the last couple of weeks, a couple of conversations regarding, you know, water and sewer and repairs, you know, and the fact that obviously, the way that our rules are written, if there's a breakage in the pipe in the street, then obviously, the owner of the property pays, you know, all the restoration for that, you know, including permit fees. And, you know, this particular person is looking at a $12,000 to $14,000 bill, and obviously is quite concerned about it. And I wondered if it's possible for staff to, you know, pull a few local cities, you know, like Detroit Lakes, Alex, Breckenridge, and to see how they handle this, that, you know, where is that demarcation line, to see whether we're kind of on the same, same lines. I think the concern is that, obviously, you, you're buying a property, and probably unbeknownst to most people is, you know, you know, they could face a significant bill if, if something goes wrong in the street, that really, they don't know anything about. And typically, obviously, a home inspection wouldn't go and look at, obviously, the water lines and the sewer lines in the street. So I think, I just would like to know what the comparables are, you know, for cities in our, in our area, if people can, if, I don't expect an answer tonight, but, you know, unless you're normal, and pick it up at the next meeting or something like that. Thank you.
All right. This brings us...
Dan does have one new business item as well.
Oh, all right. Dan?
This one, new business item is, will fit right in with what Anthony was talking about, because this is a request from a property owner on North Broadway, where they had to replace and repair a service all the way out to the main, rather deep main down there. So the bill for the work just within the street right away, which included the pipe laying, but also replacing the curb and gutter, the sidewalk, and the street pavement amounted to, in this case, $5,726, and they would like to put it on a special assessment, as we have done before for other properties. When we do that, we add a $500 fee to the cost, because we have to hold a public hearing, final cost hearing, place publications in the newspaper, just as if it was a half million dollar project, we have to go through the same process. So we've done this, the owners provided the 100% petition for the improvements, that shows the total cost would be $6,226.85. Typically, that would be a 15-year special assessment. We're estimating the interest rate at 5.5%, and with the 100% petition, we do not have to have a preliminary project hearing. We will simply, if the council approves this tonight and initiates Public Improvement 7191, which is how we'll reference this sanitary sewer service replacement, we will simply have a final cost hearing in the future for this amount. So the request is to have the project initiated, accept the petition, and initiate Public Improvement 7191.
Someone offer that?
I'll offer that, Charlie.
Jim?
I'll second.
Ben, second? Roll call, please.
Sinstun.
Yes.
Yes.
Sinstun.
Yes.
Shire.
Yes.
Rachel.
Fish.
Yes.
Shire.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Shire.
Rachel.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other items of business before we come to the last item of business at the regular agenda? And it is to visit with Mr. Ray Willey of the Historic Kirkbride LLC, who requested to make a presentation via telephone, he's in Austria at the moment, at tonight's meeting, to the city council and to the general public. And I believe you all have probably seen the tabloid and the ad and the weekend papers that appeared regarding the Kirkbride. And also, there has been a request by the council to Mr. Willey for some specific information regarding regular RFP kinds of issues for the development of the Kirkbride. And so I believe Mark is emailing Mr. Willey at the moment to call in. He has a call-in number, and as soon as that happens, we will begin that discussion. Following, okay, thank you, thank you. Following the open meeting discussion, we will adjourn to a closed meeting. By the way, during, after the presentation, the council will have an opportunity to comment and interact with Mr. Willey, and when that is completed, we will open it up to public comments and so on, that will need to be brief and non-repetitive and respectful. And we will get to that process when we've completed Mr. Willey's presentation. Then we will adjourn to a closed meeting. At that closed meeting, however, we will be also considering, very briefly, some labor negotiation issues, and then get to a meeting, again, between the Kent Matson, Mark Severt, the city council, and Mr. Ray Willey, to discuss the terms that we need to get to in order to move forward with whatever is going to be happening with the Kirkbride project. Then we will reconvene. Unfortunately, we do not have security of the building, and so, in order, and we don't have technology in other parts of the buildings, so we have to ask the audience to please leave the premises while we have our closed meeting. And fortunately, it's not snowing out there, but I hope you brought your coats this evening. And we'll get that, to that point when we go to the closed meeting. Okay.
Yes, this is Ray.
Yep, you're on.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Ray Willey. We're happy to have you with us.
Well, thank you, thank you. I appreciate it. I am out of the country, but I thank you for accommodating me by phone, and I hope you can hear me.
We do.
I wanted to, first of all, say that the, you know, Kirkbride, I think everyone would agree, is a spectacular building, and more important to me, it seems like it's such an integral part of Fergus Falls' history and heritage and culture, and I personally or honorably believe it's worthy to be saved. Second, I believe there is a reasonable way to save the Kirkbride. We began evaluating how we might go about this process approximately 16 months ago, when we first came to town. We started with our own internal development group, and our group has acquired and successfully renovated several dozen historic buildings throughout America over the past three decades. So we have pretty good experience in that specialized area of historic preservation. But we expanded our team with several local workers. We have an excellent architect, an engineer, firm involved, outstanding project manager and site supervisor. And even more important, I think we have the assistance and support of so many of the wonderful citizens of Fergus Falls, which has been a huge benefit for us and a real big help for us. But we believe we have a way to save the Kirkbride from the wrecking ball, and to renovate it into several new and exciting readaptive uses. I think we have a sensible master plan for the property, splitting it into two phases. We would essentially split it in half, more or less. Phase one would be 80 Marca Ray Apartments and four or five new restaurants. The second phase would be a hotel and a community facility called the Maker Space. I recently made a trip to Traverse City, Michigan, to visit the Kirkbride and that community, and the owner and developer of the Kirkbride. He successfully developed this project and that property over time by dividing it into smaller pieces, and it seemed there was wisdom in that, and we think maybe the best way to do this is to divide the development of the property basically in half, making it much more manageable. First phase would be completed in two years, once we were to take possession of the property from the city. Second phase would be completed 30 months thereafter, beyond completion of phase one. One critical item that we would accomplish during phase one is we would restore the exteriors of all of the buildings, roofs, windows, paint, downspouts, doors, et cetera. So we wouldn't mothball the second half, we would actually finish it out, that is, the exterior of it, and preserve it, protect it, and maintain it, while we're waiting for the two years to do the other work, and then eventually move into the work on the second half. So we would complete in its entirety all of the exteriors during phase one, so the whole complex would be refurbished from the outside. We also have 80 very nice apartments scheduled for the west wing, and four restaurants that have committed to open eateries in the building, and we felt that this mixture is a good first step to help creating a cohesive work, live, play environment. I also believe that saving the Kirkbride will have a huge positive impact in the community, not just from things like a few hundred new jobs that will be created, permanent jobs, and not just the economics of it, from local purchasing, increased sales tax, tax basis, et cetera. But I believe saving the building, for the sake of saving the building, is perhaps the most important impact of all in the community. I can only imagine the negative impact and the loss to the community and the whole it would, would leave if that beautiful building was destroyed. I wanted to turn to the financial piece of this. Most critically, we have secured in excess of 96% of the funds required to do the project. Of the $21 million cost for phase one, we have arranged $20,300,000. We only have a funding gap of $700,000. That's less than 4% of the total project cost. The most difficult challenge that we have wrestled with since day one is this. If that beautiful building was in Manhattan, New York, it would probably be worth hundreds of millions of dollars. If that building was in San Francisco, probably many tens of millions. If it was in the Twin Cities, I'm sure multiple millions. But this beautiful building is located in Fergus Falls, a lovely, wonderful community that we love, we've come to love, the community and the people, but perhaps not able to support the level of investment required to do the job right. So we, as developers, are extremely limited as to how much money we can legitimately invest in relationship to what sort of return we can generate from the rents that we will create. The only money we'll get back is going to be the rents that will be created, and a small developer's fee for doing the project. The bad news is that this fees and this amount is marginal, and at best, will barely pay its own way, and we hope to generate a little bit of return on capital. Of the $21 million, our group is injecting $10 million of our own money. We are borrowing $10 million, essentially, to put towards it. So the risk for us is enormous, and yet the reward is fairly minimal. The project is going to have to pay a $10 million debt load, and hopefully make some project thereafter. So because of this economic reality, it is clear that perhaps the city, and maybe not the developers, not our group, is, I would say, by far, the greatest beneficiary of saving the Kirkbride. Yes, we hope to benefit too by it, we want to be a beneficiary, and we want to make some return on our money, in addition to saving the building. But I believe the greatest benefit is for the city and the community itself, and they stand to benefit by far more than anyone else. I wanted to point out part of our dilemma, and I have made arrangements to have our old proposal, the original proposal, three-page proposal from June 12, 2013, available tonight. I don't want you to mistake it for our current proposal, this is a second proposal, but our first proposal was made June 12, 2013.
Ray, excuse me, Ray, our council members have that copy?
We were told that the city would provide $4 million of the approximately $8 million of funding that the state of Minnesota had allocated to the city, and that we could use this money for direct improvements to the building. So we were originally told that, and so our original proposal included it in there. We factored that into our proposal, and on June 12, 2013, submitted to the city. The one that you're holding in your hand or the one that's been provided tonight clearly delineates the funding from the $4 million and how it would be spent. This proposal we made was accepted and approved unanimously by the city council on June 12, 2013, for us to use these funds. But sometime later, the city informed us that this could not occur, that a mistake had been made, and that these funds could not be used for building improvements. We understood that a mistake was made, it did have a devastating impact on our performance, and we relied on these funds, and suddenly, they were rescinded. But this drove us to rethink our project, and to hopefully find creative ways to help offset these once-promised funds. That is the primary reason we have amended our original proposal and are now developing the property in two phases. And we have been, I am pleased to report, able to offset much of the $4 million without any assistance from the city. At this point in time, we are only $700,000 short of our total budget of $21 million. So that is why I proposed in my last meeting with the city council, a way to fund this $700,000 funding gap. The state of Minnesota had allocated almost $8 million when they gave the building to the city, and of that, my understanding is there's approximately $700,000 in a maintenance fund, which I then suggested be used for this purpose. I figured if the building was going to be torn down, there was no need to spend $700,000 maintaining it. And then, on the other hand, if a group like ours were to save the building, we'd take it over, and we'd maintain it. So it seemed to me that the $700,000, which was supposed to be used for the maintenance fund, would be a likely source, and we thought it made perfect sense to us. fund, would be a likely source, and we thought it made perfect sense to us for the city to allocate those funds that they were given by the state. However, this project was rejected by the council, and Mr. Mattson wrote me a letter stating that the $700,000 maintenance fund would not be considered to be used. He made it clear on numerous occasions that the city will not commit any money to saving the Kirkbride. And he said that the Kirkbride no need to stand on its own, that the development group has to do it on its own. I'm not sure about this, but it seems to me that our group coming up with $20,300,000 and perhaps not getting the biggest benefit, and yet the one that benefits the most, the city, is not willing to spend any money whatsoever, is a little bit of a dilemma for me, and it's a little bit of a struggle for our group. I'm not suggesting that $700,000 come from the maintenance fund, because Mr. Mattson made it clear that would not be considered under any condition. But I would like to ask for the city to consider funding the gap of $700,000 from some other resource outside of the maintenance funds that they may be willing to consider. We think it is a reasonable request to ask the city to participate a bit as a way to offset the $4 million that was originally promised us. The city has mentioned that they would donate the building, or rather, deed the building to us. We appreciate that. The building, I guess, was deeded to the city by the state, and now the city to us, ending, working all these things through. I would mention, when the state gave the building to the city, they also gave them $8 million to deal with it. We're hoping to get some of that money if we can, because now we're dealing with it. There's also been mention of a property tax savings that I wanted to address. There's savings of property tax spread over a fifteen-year increment of time, and we appreciate that very much. The state and, I guess, the county and the city are jointly participating on this. I'm not sure the workings of it. But what I do understand about it is if the city doesn't develop the property and the building's torn down, there's no loss one way or another on the money. Also, if we do the improvements to the building and we increase the value, that creates the mechanism for that incentive. And I guess what I'm saying in a roundabout way is either way, the result's the same with the city. If the city doesn't develop that building, if it's torn down, there's no economic, any funding coming from the city, any incentive, and there's none the other way. Either way, it's the same result. The city comes out the same financially, whether they commit one way or the other. Final issue that kind of has recently emerged that I wanted to mention is I got a letter on September 17, 2014, from Mr. Mattson, asking for additional information and referencing the RFP, the request for proposal. The following day, I flew to Tucson on the 18th of September. I was there until the 20th. I flew back on the 20th to San Francisco, and on the 21st, I flew to Europe. I'm in Europe now, and I don't return home until October 9. I told Kent that I was real limited as to what I could provide, but I would do the best I can. He specifically asked for three items, which I answered the three specific questions. He made reference to the RFP in general, which I was not able to readdress. And I had limited email access and limited access to our own documents and correspondence and so forth. Over the past sixteen months, I have submitted various written documents, printed materials, flyers, brochures, cut sheets, background pieces, newspaper articles, letters, emails. There's been phone calls, private meetings, public meetings, personal meetings. A lot of the items requested in the RFP have been supplied over time in bits and pieces. I feel, though, that even though I feel it's adequate myself, I believe Kent is looking for something beyond what I provided. Rather than bits and pieces disseminated over a sixteen-month period fairly randomly, I think probably what he's looking for is something more formally assembled, put together in maybe a large binder with specific order and maybe headings and so forth. This was not done. I would hate to have our proposal rejected on the pretext of an incomplete RFP response. And being in Europe until October 9, I am willing to assemble all of the required material and to supplement it with any additional or missing parts and submit it to the city by October 23, if that would work from everyone's perspective. That would give me two weeks of time, once I return to the United States, to do that. I believe it would be a travesty to, you know, because we didn't submit it in a certain format or a specific way, to have this proposal not given a fair look. I do want to say that we do have the essential elements in place, the vast majority of the money, and getting the money is about ninety percent of the job, from our experience. The money's always the very most difficult thing to assemble. So we have ninety-six percent plus of the money. We have a great development team assembled, restaurants lined up. It's not like we're starting from scratch. So I would like to take the two weeks from my return to the States to produce a more officially-formatted response for the RFP. So my request this evening is twofold: Allow me those two weeks to put this together and consider allocating $700,000 from some form of city funds or other funds to cover the funding gap of our project. And I, you know, in my mind, a question just has been surfacing over and over, and that is, to me, is saving the Kirkbride with all of its benefits to the community of Fergus Falls, is it worth $700,000? That question just has come back to my mind time and again. And I appreciate the time. That's all I wanted to share.
Would you tell him that Kent would like to address some of the comments?
Thank you.
Kim?
Yes, Mr. Willie, I think I speak for a lot of people in this community in that we want you to succeed. We think that what you have done in terms of your proposed plan is wonderful. We think that it is viable, and we are sure that if carried to its conclusion, it would be extremely good for Fergus Falls. First, I don't believe that the owner should be placed solely on Mr. Mattson with regard to his requests.
I can barely hear just some people of whoever is talking.
Okay, this is Tim Urquhart, a council member.
Can you start over and speak a little louder? I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine.
You will, Ray. We're bringing the phone closer to him.
All right, thanks. Can you hear me now, Mr. Willie?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Okay, good. Okay. Just to reiterate very briefly, we do appreciate all that you have done thus far. I speak for a lot of people in the city in that we are rooting for it. We want this project to succeed. Having said that, one comment that I want to make is that the owner should not be placed on Mr. Mattson with regard to the request for more specific information. It is the city, sir, that is, has asked you for due diligence data, and I do not believe, and Mr. Mattson believes too, that such requests are not unreasonable. My question to you, sir, is I want to be absolutely crystal clear that you understand what is being asked of you to provide by October 23. I want to clear if any sort of misunderstanding as to what the city is asking for and as to what you believe you need to supply in order to comply.
Well, I will say that has been fuzzy in my mind. I was given an RFP day one. In fact, I may have even received it before I even made my first trip there. But I was told that we weren't going to be adhering to it precisely, and that it wouldn't be formal responses to it. It would be informal, and it was just the substance and essence of the material. So I am a little fuzzy on that. I came to realize in the last couple days where this was headed, and that it seemed to me there was a redirection back towards adhering to the letter of the law of the RFP. I'm okay with that. I understand that now. And I know what's in that RFP, and if that's what the city needs, I'll be happy to provide that.
This is Jay Psycho speaking. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, here's my take on this. I would love this to succeed too. I don't want the Kirkbride torn down if we can avoid it. Couple of thoughts after I listen to your presentation just right now. One, I don't know whoever said to you that we don't want you to respond specifically to the RFP. I would be interested to know who said that, because that has never come from the council from my mouth and from any meeting that I've heard. And we specifically, time and time again, have asked you for specific financial information. I like what you've given me so far, but you've given us a lot of propaganda stuff, which is fine. It makes you feel good about what might happen. But you've been very light on really how you're funding it, where the money's coming from, and guarantees that it's here. Secondly, you said a lot of things tonight that were semi-inflammatory that are not true about anything the council's done or said. We never promised you that we would give you $4.5 million. That's not in our power. We've never had that power. So that's not true. We've tried to work with you, and I want you to succeed as well. But I understand that there's a whole room of people here, and it's easy to try to make, put all the pressure up here and make it on us like we don't want this to happen. That's not true. We just want specific information from you that was very clear from the beginning, and I don't like the fact that you disseminated a bunch of disinformation right here. Now, I'm fine. I'm not holding it against anybody, because I want this to succeed, and I want what's best for this town for the next twenty years. I don't care if you said something and people look at me and frown on me. That's fine. That's my job sitting up here. But some of the things you said just weren't true, and that I don't like. That's my take, sir.
If I inferred that when I said the city, you, Jay, or any of the city council members, told us that that money was available and could be used by us directly for building improvements, I'm wrong. I didn't think that I said the city council members told us that. They didn't. But we were told by city staff that this money could be used for those improvements.
I don't believe you.
Included it, excuse me, we included it in our proposal that six of you voted on, and it's very clearly stated in there. Now, I'm not making a big deal about it. I understand it was a mistake. I'm not demanding that money or expecting it. I'm just wanting to go on record to make sure the public understands the process and the history of what we went through, relying on what we were told early on and then having that change because somebody, this calculator, made a mistake. I didn't ever say that the city council members said that. That is not correct. I never said that. But it was told to us by city staff. Then as to the funding issue, I brought my tax credit attorney and our financial attorney, John Anderson, back to Fergus Falls for a second visit, and he, in closed session at great length, explained how all the financing mechanism works, and I felt that he did an adequate job in doing that. And then he was asked to give some written material as to a breakdown and supplied that. So we feel that we've complied with that. If that's not enough, we're happy to do more.
Anthony, please.
Hey, Ray, it's Anthony. I think, you know, obviously, to a certain extent, you know, past is past, and I think we're at a point whereby we're trying to get this into a formal proposal, and I think, you know, you summed it up earlier when you said that, obviously, you provided a number of pieces, but it's been bits and pieces. It's been a piecemeal delivery of varied documents over the passage of time. And I think what we're looking for is basically a business plan that obviously outlines the objective, you know, outlines the costs associated with the redevelopment. You know, something more than one line, you know, one line that says $21 million, you know. It's more about formalizing the process. And, you know, the funding, you know, obviously, we have an email that states, you know, five or six lines on it with the varied tax credits and obviously the, you know, the EB5 and, you know, the commercial loan. And I think, you know, we need something that substantiates those funds, even if it's contingent to, you know, something acknowledging that the EB5s are, you know, available on the basis of this project, you know, subject to, because it's, you know, I mean, I've been in the position before of trying to raise money, and it's chicken and egg. You know, everybody wants, you know, their piece first, and sometimes that's not possible. Somebody has to go first. And I think we need, you know, obviously, a developer's timeline on, you know, how the projects, you know. I think it's the right approach to break this down into two phases, phase one, phase two. But then I think, you know, within that phase one, we need to define kind of some, you know, goals. And we all know that these things will change. And I think, you know, obviously, when John and yourself were here in September, it was a very good meeting. I think it was a very positive meeting. And John, you know, verbalized the programs that you're using and how you utilize them. And he obviously made, you know, made the statement that he would deliver that in a written form. And I think if we could get that in a written form, you know, just, you know, because we, I think somebody mentioned earlier about due diligence, you know, we have ultimately, you know, we have the responsibility for every citizen in Fergus Falls, not just the citizens that obviously have an interest in the Kirkbride. And I think there is, as, you know, somebody else said, there's a large percentage that want to see this project go. But I think we just need to formalize where we're at, you know, the documentations that we do have, and put a business plan together that can sit in front of, you know, people and say, this is the proposal, and just, you know, narrow it down to obviously what matters. I don't think anybody's looking for war and peace. You know, they're looking for something that's, you know, complete and concise and addresses the points and concerns, you know, that anybody will have, you know, going forward. And obviously, the fifteen-year tax abatement, you know, that is a big number, and that is a contribution not only just to the city, but obviously as the county, you know, the state and the school district, you know, going forward, obviously, you know, and obviously, you know, that's an incentive that goes with the Kirkbride to obviously encourage somebody to redevelop it. So, I mean, I think we're not that far apart, you know, but we just need something to, you know, to basically check boxes as much as anything.
I would like for...
Okay, I understand. That makes sense.
I would like for Mr. Mattson to articulate everything that's been said here and requested, if you would, please. We need for someone to, for Ray to hear that. Can that get as far as a podium?
We're coming.
You want to just stand there and hold?
Can you hear Kent right now, Ray?
Perhaps he could.
I can hear you.
Kent, you could sit away. Sure.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Ray, can you hear me okay?
I can.
You know, I just took down a couple of notes. I think the mayor wanted me to respond to some of the points. In terms of the formality side of it, and one of the things I think everybody will understand is the communications that have been going out from myself to the developer have been copied to the city council, the mayor and city staff. And one of the things that we've reiterated, Ray, and it's right in my letter, is we're not expecting a lot of form or formality around the information request. And that was specifically in my letter. We indicated we didn't need anything bound. We wanted the substance. We wanted the meat. And if anybody would like to see a copy of that letter that went out, I can certainly provide it for you. But I think we disabused you of any notion that there has to be some pomp and circumstance around it. Is that fair representation, council members?
Yes.
So, Ray, I think if you developed in your mind an expectation that we needed a bound document, that's not what we wrote and that's not what we've said. The second piece is, since the council asked for this letter to go out specifying what they were missing and what they wanted, we've had regular standing weekly meetings set with the city staff, myself and the developer. September 17th, September 24th and October 1st were our regularly scheduled sessions. Ray, we wanted to have the conversation with you to make sure that you knew what the charge was, you make sure that you knew what we were looking for, and nobody attended those calls for you. Now, I understand that you were on the road, but we had suggested that your partner, Bill Brown, be present or John Anderson be present. I had emailed both of them repeatedly. I had called John Anderson for some information and I got no response back. So we've tried to be transparent. We've tried to be communicative to you. We wanted to have these phone conferences with either you or your representatives to clear these things up and make sure you're on the same page, but that didn't happen. And as I indicated in some emails recently, the disclosure that you provided fell short of what the council was looking for and we wish we would have had that opportunity to talk and explain that. So the last correspondence I received from you and Mark did as well was you said Bill Brown wasn't authorized to be on those phone calls and John Anderson wasn't. That was news to us, but again, we tried to communicate with you and the record will reflect that. So that's the second point I'd like to make. The third point, and this is perhaps one of the pieces that is causing some consternation from the council and city staff, is neither the council nor myself nor any staff member ever promised your group that you would have $4 million or whatever the state grant funds were. And in fact, the RFP document that you were provided from day one, in it, in black and white terms, says the funds are only available for city use and are not transferable to any private developers. That's in the RFP document from 2011. It's been provided to you multiple times. It was provided before you made your original presentation to the council in May of 2013. So I take exception, the council takes exception, city staff takes exception that there's a representation that anything like that was promised to you. We had a discussion the other day about this and you weren't able to tell us who told you that, but it wasn't anybody that sits in this room right now from the council, the staff or myself. And that's the fact and anybody who wants to look at it in black and white, it's right here. So, again, we can say bygones to that, but we want to be transparent. We want to be credible with you and we're just telling you that that never happened. If you can tell us who told you that from the city, we would love to know that, but that just never happened. The other side of it is, is again, since September 15th, we've told you what we would like to see, that information is intended to give the council the ability to make a decision on the viability of the project, the financial wherewithal of you and your development team and to nail down the specifics, notwithstanding that you've provided some flyers and things in the past. We haven't seen the type of financial information on the project that is worthy of a project like this. And one of the resources that we provided to the council recently is a term sheet from a Minnesota bank that is involved in sponsoring affordable housing projects like this. And it teases out the type of information the bank expects. And we laid that against the RFP document and the bank asked for kind of the same information that we've asked for. So we don't think we're putting anything on you that the banks wouldn't be expecting of you. But again, the council asked for this so they could make an informed decision about whether or not to award your development project and we haven't seen it. We've been asking for it since September 15th and quite frankly, before that. But again, the record should be clear on that because it's in, it's in black and white. Whether the council wants to grant an extension to provide something more is their prerogative, but again, we've asked for that type of information. Terms of the local assistance, over the years, I think the city has done a good job in trying to put together a package that can assist developers to save the Kirkbright. That includes the 15-year tax exemption, which equates to roughly $8 million at a base cost savings to your group. We've also negotiated the ability to use the grant funds for basic infrastructure improvement, sidewalks, lights, streets and the like to support your project. That can be put into your pro forma instead of having you make those expenditures, extension of utilities and the like. And then, you know, making the property available at basically no cost. So the local units of government do have skin in the game. It's in the millions of dollars and they're making that available to you. So I think that needs to be recognized, but those are some of the points I wanted to make in response to kind of make the record clear here. Again, we're trying to be a partner. We're trying to be transparent, but we also want to make sure that the record's clear on what was said and what wasn't said.
As to those issues, the formality side of it, I agree. I don't think, I'm not suggesting that I picked up from you folks. It needs to be bound necessarily in a, you know, pompous way. I did pick up that, that instead of just random bits and pieces, that you're looking for this thing to be formatted differently and supplied with additional information. I understand that. I don't have a problem with that. As to the weekly meetings, I did not say that John Anderson and/or Bill Brown were not authorized to be on the calls. I don't know where that came from. I said there's no value for them to be on the calls and no need for them to be on the calls. They have limited pieces they've already done, limited pieces. The majority of it is on my back and the purpose of the weekly calls, that when they were originally set up and intended, were to open further enhanced communication between myself and the city. And I've mentioned this to you before, Kent, and not to continue to invite them on these calls. They don't need to be on there. But I've never said they're not authorized to be on there. As to the third point you made, I have never said you, Kent, made those statements nor the city council members. But city staff did in fact tell us that. We did in fact rely on it. We did in fact include it in, clearly included in, the June 12th, 2013 proposal that we submitted that you looked at and you reviewed and the city approved. And we wouldn't have done all that, we wouldn't have made all that up had it not been told to us. It was a mistake. We're not holding it against anybody, but to make and act like it didn't occur, it's We've mitigated most of it. There's just $700,000 left to deal with.
Specifically, what kind of financial information do we have to have?
You know, Mayor, I think we could kind of go through the whole RFP document this evening, but we've said a time and again, it's in black and white. We've referenced the sections that are at issue. It's, you know, the description of the costs, the expenditure for the uses, the project cost flow, the market feasibility assessment, the soft and hard costs of the project and some indication that there isn't an evaluation that the project is feasible, just the typical profit-loss statement of a development that you would show a lender to show cash flow. What we've received has been two emails that are about 12 lines each saying, here's a project timeline and here's what our sources are and our uses are. It's not the type of in-depth information with backup documentation that would allow the council or a lender or anybody trying to award a development would be able to rely on and make an informed decision. We've asked for those details to be provided. I look back what was provided by one of the other competitors for the project, Terrence Sholton, I believe his name was, and he provided more depth. He provided more information. He provided a pro forma of what the cash flows would be. He provided a more in-depth breakdown of what his project would be. It's those types of things that we're trying to get for the council to be able to make that informed decision. No different than would be provided to a bank at this stage of the game on a development of this type, an indication of who tenants are in those types of things. So just, I think we've been fairly clear and the council's been fairly clear of what they're looking for. Arm them with the information to support the project and they'll make the right decision. We just haven't seen that yet and that's something that the council and the community of Fergus Falls is entitled to get, to make an informed decision.
Would another two weeks give Mr. Willie the opportunity and the wherewithal to make that possible?
That's up to the council. We serve at your pleasure.
Well, I'm asking you to ask Ray Willie if that is the case.
Maybe somebody can translate it because I don't think Ray can hear.
So Ray, would two weeks be sufficient to put together the type of information that we've requested over the last few weeks?
Yes.
Ben?
Just getting earlier, he'd asked, he speaks back on the night. So just make clear about what's the two week period is. Is it two weeks from tonight or is it two weeks from Thursday?
He said, I said earlier that 20...
He said 20/30.
...of October, which was two weeks after he returned from Europe.
Maybe a Thursday, yes.
Yeah. I think as well, could we just ask Ray, is he clear on what is being asked for? Somebody can ask it from there or there. Ray, it's Anthony again. I just, obviously it's a little challenging but not impossible, but is, are you clear on what is being requested? Have you got any questions that you need clarification on what is, you know, what is needed to put this thing to bed?
I believe I understand what is needed now.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Anthony.
Ray, this is Mayor Howe. Thank you for being on here this evening. We appreciate the candor and the information exchange and so on, and I think it helped to clear the air of some things that we all need to be considerate of. We're going to go into a, well, we're going to give the people in our audience this evening an opportunity to comment and then we're going to go into a closed meeting to consider your comments and your proposal and so on. And the council will have an opportunity to go forward with that information. We will be reconvening the meeting again to reiterate what took place in that closed meeting and you are welcome to come along with us into that closed meeting. The audience here will be asked to leave the premises for the period of time that it takes us for that consideration, but we would like to have you here in order to, I guess, complete the discussion and be able to go forward from there. Is that acceptable to you?
Yes.
All right. Very good. Then we'll go forward now with some audience participation and we'll try to make that as brief as we can. Is there any other questions that need to be asked by the council before we do that? All right, thank you. We will entertain comments, questions or what have you, very briefly, a maximum of two minutes and a statement or question, whatever it be, and that we not be repetitive about it. If there is an issue different from the first speaker, then we will certainly welcome that and so on, but we want to move this along as we, expediently as we can and still give everybody the opportunity they need. So I will ask whoever ever to come forward, identify yourself, your address and make your statement. And I'll, no stampede, please, just come forward.
Tim Lit, 626 West Beach.
Yeah, Tim, may I just also say before we go that it's really a problem for the person on the end of that speaker if there's clapping, yelling, whatever you have. So I ask you to be as calm and quiet as possible. Thank you.
I just have one question. So there's a $700,000 gap and there's $700,000 in a maintenance fund? What is the city planning on doing with that maintenance fund if they're not going to let it be used for this?
Do we, I think we can respond?
Well, so far, you know, we've been using those funds for anything we've had to do thus far and also, you know, the mowing, all that, the various consultants and appraisals throughout the years. And I guess that would remain to be seen if we transfer the property. Thank you. We do have a couple of things on tunnel demolition that we need to do up there for about $100,000. The administration building, if we need to demo that section of that, that could be another $100,000. We have some outstanding legal fees depending on where it goes. I think we're currently in the $40,000s. Depends on transfer property. I mean, that could get up to over $100,000, $150,000. Like I said, the mowing, if we, to take us up to a transfer date, you know, out a little bit here, could be another $25,000. We probably spend $10,000 a year maintaining the grounds. So that's some of the like-kind costs that we do with that.
Hi, my name is Deb Zackman. I live at 1411 South Mill Street in Fergus Falls, Minnesota. My comment is addressed to the city council based on what I've heard and what I've followed in the newspaper and meetings. I would just like to recommend to you all to, when you go to your meeting, that you would approve the request to give Mr. Willie the time to complete his RFP. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Rod Speedall. I live at 1010 Meadow Hill Lane, Fergus Falls, Minnesota. Thank you for hearing our comments. I came to this process over the years as doubter. I was not convinced one way or the other. I didn't have any preconceived notions. I had clean smelt up there with the Boy Scouts and had gut fights and run through the tunnels when Muggstown's and had the smelt fry stuff going on. And as I've looked at the building and talked to people about these one and a half to two foot thick walls and realized that this project of demolition has not been detailed fully or all the costs laid out... has not been detailed fully or all the costs laid out and all the equipment and what will happen and how do you restructure that site and what do you do about compaction, how deep are your holes and what are you going to? There's a lot of stuff that hasn't been said on the demolition side. But on the positive side, I believe that there have been people coming that are willing to work on this project, and they're in a class I think that we're not used to. We're not used to addressing that level. I don't know if we think we have to be a bank. I think we're not a bank. We're not loaning the money. I do agree you have due diligence. I agree with all that. I would like to see the letter that was sent, you offered, I think, Kent, that we could see that, what was sent exactly that you're requesting. People have that, I think, question, I have that question, okay? So I'd love to see that letter, exactly what should be provided so that we know as a public what should be there. And I'd also say that the person who, one person who did address the council at one point, Doug Burgum, is now building, revitalizing downtown Fargo and building a 20-something, whatever. All I'd say is, give this guy a chance. You can't lose anything if he invests this money, and it's going to be, the structure is going to be preserved, okay? Give him a chance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Michelle Anderson, 616 East Mount Faith. I just want to say, I think we're too close to make a U-turn right now, so let's give Ray the time he needs to put the rest of his proposal together. I also just wanted to mention that there are many people in this community who have done, with even fewer resources, everything they possibly can to keep this project moving forward. Springboard for the Arts recently had the Kirkbride cycle performance. We had over 600 people turn out. We had people from Missouri, from Arizona, from Wisconsin, and North Dakota, and from a total of 74 different zip codes attend this play. They were very moved. They are following this story. If we turn around now, we're going to hear from them. And they're going to be really sad and disappointed. They've made new memories there. They want to come back to Fergus Falls. They want to spend money here. And we're also, we're under other national spotlights. The Robert Leopold from the Smithsonian National History Museum read my graduate thesis and chose me as the award of the Cultural Sustainability Prize for my grad school, and he's following the story with enormous interest, Art Place, NEA. So these people have hope for us. It's not, they're not watching to see what we do wrong. They're watching to see what we do right.
Thank you.
My name is Dennis Johnson. I live at 607 West Kevore. And to follow up what Michelle said, I have a copy of the Kirkbride cycle for each one of you. And I'd just like to give it to Lynn.
Thank you very much, Dennis, and thank you, Michelle, and everyone associated with Springboard for the Arts, for the Place-Based Productions and so on. It was fantastic.
Teresa Mann, 106 South Mill. I'd like to commend the council for having this part of the meeting be open. I think that the requests that I heard, having worked for a developer in Boulder, are reasonable and fair for what a developer should have to put together. I think that having had closed meetings and not having the public understanding what you guys were going through has caused a lot of misunderstanding and concern that you were just going to turn it down. And so I want to commend you for opening up this part of the meeting. And I would suggest that you continue to have open parts of, or reports out of what happens in your closed meetings so that the community understands what's going on. When I hear news of Minneapolis negotiating with the Vikings, and there's billions of dollars at stake, and there's still some news about what those negotiations are about, it makes me wonder what we're doing here. So again, I commend you for having this part of it be open.
Thank you.
Bert Whitcomb, 106 South Mill also. And maybe on a line of all that, the city is not you guys. It's all of us. And we've been really confused and really worried about that whole process, as several people have mentioned. Our involvement seems like we're outside of it, although I've got this folder here of 13 years that I got from the city. It was great to go over that. And there's probably twice that many of citizens of this community worrying, gnashing their teeth, rumoring about what might happen. We, as the city, are very interested in having that happen. And the burden of not knowing, as we've just heard about communication, creates rumors that additionally complex the problem. We do need, this is, I mean, we've already made our statement as the people. It's difficult to go around town and find somebody that wants to tear it down. There certainly are economic concerns, but those aren't even discussed. It's rumors about that it's a bunch of city tax dollars that are going on, although we've heard otherwise. So there's just a whole lot of stuff, and I don't have the time, and I'm hoping this process moves forward. Nonetheless, this is our city. It's not staff or staff and council. And I know that there are some things that you specifically need to do. It's our city. We are also interested. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Emily McCune, 714 North Vine Street. I think I can lend a sort of a different perspective to this whole process. I'm not a native to Fergus Falls. I moved here four years ago. Didn't know anything about the Kirkbride. And since then, I've sort of been in the background just kind of an enthusiast for the preservation of the building. I'm not going to pretend to know the legal workings, the money stuff behind this whole proposal, but as a sort of active member in the, you know, preservation of it, I was part of the Kirkbride cycle. It changed my life, really. I learned a lot about that. I just want to, I think that this is so potentially awesome for the city of Fergus Falls to bring people into the city, not just visiting, but to move here. I just bought a house here, so I'm staying. I'm committed to Fergus Falls. I never thought that would happen. But this is just the best community I've ever been a part of. And I just think there's a lot of potential with this magical building, and I think it would be a shame to turn around where, how far we've come now. Thanks.
Thank you.
Lori Mullin, 2840 Lakewood Drive. You guys know that I've been involved in this process for the last 10 years. It was magical, the Kirkbride cycle that was held at the Kirkbride, September 6th. You know, we talk about the Kirkbride and that adaptive reuse. And at the end of the play, we talked about what the future would be for the Kirkbride. And it said it in the paper. "The future holds out her arms for us. Will we run to her?" These people and many more in the community, that's what we want to do. We want that adaptive reuse.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Maxine Schmidt, 524 Woodland Drive. The name of the other developer was mentioned a little bit ago. And I would just like to remind you, you did have two developers at the table that evening. You are the ones that chose Ray Willie and historic Kirkbride. Remember that, please. And I would like to see you do whatever you can to help this proposal happen instead of roadblocks in the way, again. I know you need the due diligence, you need the financial information, you need all of that, but take a step of faith. What if this succeeds? What if it succeeds? Think of that, please. You are the ones that chose this developer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Jean Schmidt, 524 Woodland Drive, Fergus Falls. Friend of the Kirkbride, also been involved with this 10 years, as you well know. Those of you who have been on the council that long. I disagree with a statement, and I'm sorry to do that because we've had a lot of positive statements, that $1 million originally, which $749,000 some dollars remain, was for maintenance. It was not for demolition, to my understanding. That is a separate fund, which was 7 point some million. Could I be explained on that?
Did I say that we were using the 700 for demolition?
That's my understanding.
Huh?
For the tunnels.
Oh, for the tunnels.
Tunnels and a building, I think you said.
And the administration. It's potential for that. You know, we're just saying, if we need to reserve out something, if we needed to do that some other way, we would do it some other way. But yeah, it's for maintenance or any other cost for holding this facility, so. So we have every legal right to do that if the council chooses to use $100,000 from that. We haven't done that yet, but if we, if we did.
Okay, I understand that. But wasn't part of that 7 million for demolition? And you still have some of that left? Shouldn't that be used?
We do, but if there's enough of that left or not, would be the question.
Part of it has to do with the dates both that Ray wants for transfer of the facility, that there's limits on when we can spend the dollars. And if we give him the title to the property, then we can no longer use some of the grant dollars. And if he then wants some of that demolition done yet, it has to come out of a different fund. So this part of it is driven by the development itself, not just by the staff.
And I didn't explain that at all. I apologize.
No, that's fine, though. I understand what you're saying. But also, if I may say, and I lost my train of thought, excuse me, I'm old. I'll sit down because I can't remember what I was saying. I disagree with part of what he said, and if I have a chance, I'll talk to him later. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, Ben?
Can we just have either Bill or Mark just clarify that 1.1 or whatever it was, million dollars, exactly? Is there restrictions on what it can, cannot be spent?
Well, I can just, when we took the property or got the property from the state, you know, we went through a number of transitions of, you know, of the grant, you know, based upon, you know, estimated cost of the demolition of the entire facility, and then we got into some other issues with the incinerator and whatnot. But ultimately, I believe that was 7.158, something like that, million. Now, the other part of the equation when we got the property from the state is that, and I should back up, that 7.158 was grant dollars, and there's restrictions on how that can be used. And that's kind of what Dan was talking about. The $1 million that was given to us was an incentive given to us by the Department of Human Services out of their yearly budget. And there was absolutely no strings attached to that. So I understand, you know, the arguments that have been had here. But that $1 million is to be used at your discretion, however you'd like to do it. You've chosen to put it, you know, in a fund, and we've used those dollars associated with the RTC. You recall, we've spent $20,000 on a proposal that was proposed for veteran services. $50,000 went to EIC that provided that to Ray to do a housing study. So we've done a lot of things with that $1 million, and we're down to $700,000 some dollars. You could use it for whatever you want, even if you don't want to use it toward the RTC, but that's what you've chosen to use that for.
Thank you. I just want to be clear that if someone knows that there's no strings attached to that.
Right, there's no strings attached.
Correct. We call it the maintenance fund, but it's just, there's no strings.
Yeah.
Could I actually step up a little?
If there is no one else who wants to comment.
May I do a follow-up? My head came back.
After Mr. Whitcomb.
This will be really brief. I beseech all of you to watch that DVD. Maybe some of the perceived abyss between us will disappear. You've got it now. As far as I know, of all the people that are making this decision, as opposed to all of us community people out here, one of you has seen it. Is that accurate? If I've made a mistake, I apologize. Two, okay. Maybe you'd have some more understanding about the citizens, the other part of the city, if you were to see that. I think it's absolutely right on. So I beseech you, take the time, 90 minutes. That's all it takes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry for my age. But isn't there some way, and I realize there's a time limit to spend, actually spend that demolition money, that's part of that 7 million grant, whatever the odd number is. But isn't, can't you give him an assurance that he will have it and proceed with the demolition without actually signing the property over to him? So he can move ahead and he knows that you will not go back on this? Isn't that a possibility?
Mark?
You make a really good point, and you're right. But the dilemma that we've been dealing with, and I think you got a good sense of that tonight, is that whether we go down any demolition route or no demolition route, or we use what's left of those grant dollars for the public utilities portion of it, we're not, the council's not ready to make the decision until they've completed their due diligence. And that's all we're asking of Ray. Provide us the information so that the council can make the due diligence. Then we can move on to the next step, whether there's any demolition or utilities or whatever that time schedule may be. Because as you know, that time schedule in which we need to use the dollars is very restricted. But I don't believe the council's in a position to make any decision in that regard until they've completed their due diligence with Ray.
No, I totally understand that. I'm just encouraging them to consider that. And they also have another $250,000 that you got from the state for Highway 247 being abandoned. That's not mentioned. I've mentioned that to you before.
But that's from Highway 297.
Right, right. That's all.
Thank you. Jay?
I just want to say, I've been listening to everybody. I appreciate all you guys commenting. You know, when I hear, hey, the other part of the city, us out here, other people, I want his project to succeed, and I don't want you to think I'm against it. I just want to know what I'm doing isn't going to end up being another mill sitting there for 40 years, or it's not going to end up. The problem I have, I want you to understand that we have to consider compromise. And we're in a position now where we're compromising. Instead of this being talked about as a job incubator, this and this and that, now we're putting housing in restaurants, and that's a compromise for us, for me. I can't talk about the council, but for me. We can't lose anything. Think of the compromise when you think of the rest of the community out there. There are people in the community, believe it or not, that don't want, whatever happens, they don't want a dime spent out of their property taxes or anything. And maybe that doesn't have to be. But we have to be very cognizant of the fact, I want the success. But we have money that's set there by the state. And I, what I, I would challenge you, let's say this doesn't work. I hope it succeeds. I will support it if he gets us the due diligence, and it can happen. But if it doesn't, what have you guys thought about in terms of a compromise with other taxpayers or a compromise with us to save any of it, part of it, or anything? Because I don't hear, that the only solution, there's not only one solution to a problem. And the only, this isn't, doesn't have to be a problem. I don't want to frame it that way. But the only answer is not, the building stands forever and the city's going to mothball it if Ray Willie's project doesn't work forever. Because I think most people in this room would say, hey, hey, we should just do that in perpetuity. I don't think that most of the town, or many people in the town, would appreciate if we, if this falls through or if something happened, A, that we add another mill there, B, that we forewent our op- we forewent our opportunity, and by the way, I did go down and testify to try to get an extension before, and I'll do it again if we need to do it, but I, you need to understand that there are thousands of people in this community that also want to make sure that we protect them as well as the building. Okay, so I don't want you to think, for me, I'm not looking at, there's not only one solution, and there can't be sitting up here. I appreciate you all saying, but you have to think compromise as well, because it may come to that. Okay, so I would appreciate your input to me, and you can call me, email me, whatever. As this process goes along, give me your ideas about compromise, because that's our job up here. A lot of times, that's how you deal with any issue that confronts you, okay? It's not only one answer, and it isn't that, maybe the building can stand forever, but I, you need to consider that maybe it can't. What's the compromise? Hopefully this succeeds, and I'll support it if he gives us due diligence, but keep it in mind, we're not your enemies. We're working with you, and we want to solve this.
Any other community comment before we adjourn to a closed meeting? Thank you. Appreciate your comments very much and your consideration, and unfortunately, we have to ask you to vacate the, the facility for the amount of time it's going to take us during the closed meeting. We will reconvene. And we'll entertain a resolution to go forward.
Okay, I'll offer that. I would offer a resolution, Your Honor, to grant Mr. Willie until October 23rd to respond to the city's and Mr. Mattson's request for specific information pertaining to due diligence and to hold a special city council meeting on the 27th of October to decide, based upon the information that Mr. Willie has provided to us.
That second, man. Jay, thank you. Any comments? Local, please.
Sinson.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Sinson.
Yes.
Shire.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Seiko.
Yes.
Brentis.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. Thank you all for your patience, your understanding. The meeting is adjourned.